Hi, good afternoon. Want to thank everyone for showing up to the ad hoc field naming committee meet special meeting to be held today, September 5th at 6:00 PM. Calling the meeting in, is it 6:03 or 6:04 now?
Sure.
6:02. Thank you. So, um. Here we have it, calling the meeting to order at 6:02. Basically, according to the agenda, we have the call to order, discussion regarding the charge of ad hoc field naming committee. So we are here today to discuss two opportunities for naming of the baseball field and potentially the weight room from my understanding. So.
Yeah, or possibly the gymnasium.
Oh, or the gymnasium. Okay.
I have something to point out, manager.
Okay.
Okay. Looking at the regulations anyway, for the guidelines. And there's a little twist. So procedure for selecting the name for the school building is that the you have an appointment of an ad hoc committee composed of community members, board members, parents, faculty staff, student representatives, et cetera. The appointment is different for if you're naming a portion of the school facility. This is the fourth part of that ad hoc committee consisting of its own membership to review their request. So, does it matter? Because we have two things. One is naming of a ball field, not a building. The other is naming of a weight room, which is clearly a portion of the school facility. Actually, they're both portions of the school facility. So does it matter? I don't care personally, but I'm just bringing that up for the record, you know, whether or not the ad hoc committee is comprised correctly, is composed correctly.
Um. It doesn't matter to me because we have board, we have community members who are presenting. We technically have staff. Um, the only piece that we're missing is probably
No, I'm
Right there.
I'm third and sixth year teaching in Groton and still teaching.
I think we covered it, right?
So I guess, so I guess first question should be, now that I'm thinking about it, is who is the committee?
So officially, when Jay put us together, it was yourself, Bev and me.
So it's a three.
The three of us.
That would, that would be the requirements of the regulations. So these other gentlemen here are not officially part of the
Correct. They're here to present.
Okay.
And, you know, submit the recommendation.
Okay. So that was a foray into basically backwards start. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Perfect. No, no, no. This is good. We just want to make sure. We don't want anyone to come back and say anything, right? So thank you for bringing that up, Dean. So the, um, the first item is the discussion on naming of the baseball field. I know there was documents provided, but if anyone would like to speak to it, we are.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you doing?
So.
Ready full?
Now we're full.
Very good.
Yes. So that we're just on discussion item number three and just reviewed the fact that Dean yourself. I mean, we're the committee and then we have the gentleman present who will be speaking towards either naming of the baseball field, potentially the gymnasium.
Because I can't.
So.
You mean the weight room?
Weight room.
We.
Weight room auditorium.
We've had discussion of whether the gym would be more appropriate.
Well, that's not on that team.
Or not one.
Put that on this end.
Okay, we can talk about it in generic and then we can make, um, we can have another, like, short meeting. So like, if it is going to be. So let's move forward with naming of the baseball field. If anyone would like to speak, I can't think of which, remember, um, from people present.
I, I think in terms of the baseball field, uh, obviously, there's a legendary coach that was at Fitch for thirty-five years as a player. He's in the Hall of Fame. Uh, someone who I coached and taught with. He was my department head. Uh, probably the most revered coach and I would say in Fitch in the last fifty years. Anywhere you go and you talk about, they talk about some of the contribution of what they did to somebody, whether it's as an athlete or as a person. And that, you know, the significant contribution that he made to education, to the, to the, uh, the sport, to the neighborhood, to the community, to Falcon Pride, that Ed is beyond outstanding. And someone who worked for him as an assistant coach and saw how he led kids, led people in terms of their advancement in the sport and how important he was. And in the community, you know, that he did things within the community and, you know, everywhere you go, when you talk Fitch baseball, first thing, someone who I could still travel around, the first thing they say is Ed Harvey. And he has that reputation in the area around and around the state. You go to University of Connecticut, you go to some of the places and they, first thing they say is Ed Harvey still there? Great coach. So that's me as someone who's worked with them and, and he was my, my mentor when I worked, worked under him and with him and you know, to say he made a significant contribution is an understatement.
Alex, I'm Kurt Vincenti, class of nineteen eighty. Coach Harvey was his first unofficial year as a varsity coach. My senior year, uh, he became the head coach mid, uh, at the beginning part of the season because the head coach at the time resigned for health reasons. Coach Harvey was a JV coach and then they began varsity coach that year. Uh, I was the, one of the team captains of that year. Uh, we did go to the state final that year, lost, that was, you know, his first season bringing us to the state final after us having an, an, an average year of really uh, just a man of good character, very positive role model. Um, and I'm sure, uh, I've been out of the area for many years, but, uh, you know, his teaching career, I've heard nothing but great things and, you know, having a teacher serve that many years, uh, would have had contact with thousands of, of students over the years and, uh, as, as he said, nothing but good things I hear all the time. Uh, I'm up in the Yukon area and I always hear, uh, just so many things about Coach Harvey and and I know from my personal experience, you know, as, as the team captain, uh, him stepping into that role, uh, in our senior year, after we already started the season was really for him, it was, it was a new, a new beginning and, um, the start of his varsity coaching career. And, uh, he was just outstanding in terms of his leadership and how he treated people. And as I said, the, the positive role model he was. So I, I think his, his record and career in Groton Public Schools speaks for itself. And this is an opportunity in our view that, um, you don't, you don't teach too often. And I, I've been in the parks and rec industry for all my entire career and what, what we don't like to do is start naming things for people and have them memorial things. And this is from my perspective, the urgency of moving this forward is because we'd rather have somebody be recognized while they can appreciate that people appreciated them. And I think we're really encouraged to, yeah, the ad hoc committee to pass on to the board to, uh, to proceed with the naming of the baseball field for, uh, Ed Harvey.
So my name's Matt McGinnis. I went to Fitch, graduated nineteen eighty-five. Um, it's currently I'm coaching JV football and wrestling, came back, I've retired from business. Um, just to add a different perspective on what's said is, is the academics of, of playing for Ed Harvey. He, he wrote a document, the playbook that, uh, people use in college and other places. I mean, we, it was almost like taking a master's program uh, when you play baseball for Ed Harvey, because he had all his, he'd gone to, I think he did it in college and it all, and we, we got the benefit of that playbook. And, uh, it went on to benefit so many people in so many places. And when he retired, I remember sending a note, uh, to, uh, to thank him for, like, he created so many coaches, you know, he was a coach. And then all the people that played for him went and coached in different places and used his book and a lot of, I still have it. So, um, you know, he, he, he just had that impact that, that you know, was amplified and magnified, uh, on, in his legacy. So that's a different point of view.
And, you know, I can just speak, I mean, obviously I didn't grow up in Groton, but, um, you know, in, in becoming a teacher in Groton Public Schools and meeting Ed and kind of getting to know him as years have gone on, I've been in Groton for now twenty years, twenty-one years. Um, and, you know, I think the most impactful thing that I've seen is I think he had just had his knee replaced a couple of years back and he came in to speak to our baseball players about, um, the techniques in hitting and fundamentals and you could hear a pin drop in there. The respect that our students had for him. Um, our coaches have who, you know, basically I think every coach after him has been involved with him, um, in some aspect, whether it was under him for a year or two. Uh, and then, you know, former players who have come through the program under him and then have now been appointed as head coach. You know, if you read through some of the information, it's always, you know, I want to continue to tradition that Ed Harvey had set and established here for so many years. So I really do think it's an honor, um, you know, that you know, need or should be recognized. Uh, you know, like Mike said, you know, he's been inducted into the Hall of Fame. I, I provide you with the write-up for him, um, that we, we used when we inducted him. Um, you know, and then the amount of people that came there to support him, uh, for being inducted, all those former players. Uh, you know, even people from the community were there. So it just shows the impact that he's had on so many lives, uh, growing up and coaching and teaching in Groton.
I would like to add, one of the things that you see a lot of former players is when they come back to them and said, the things you taught me, I didn't quite get at that time. And we have many coaches who come back, twenty-five, thirty years old and they come back and go, I now get what you were saying. Now it makes sense. You know, and there's things because in terms of coaching baseball, he, he was ahead of, he was, he didn't teach kids just enough to win at that level. He was teaching things, life and a lot of kids got to college, go, I get it now. And that's, that's a sign of a great teacher because sometimes the, the lessons learned happen later.
And a great example, great family man, you know, just great all around. So.
And the, the amount of personal time he put working on that field is, um, he was up there all the time doing a lot of his own. Facility maintenance has changed over the course of time. That's when he, he did everything.
Any questions?
I was gonna say, Dean Beverly, do you have any questions for the presenters?
No, I'm just reading.
My first time through a naming committee, so.
So.
I would say, I would say the first question would be, you know, do we, do we name the field after anybody? Second, you know, if we do, that would be the best person. This name's going forward. You could argue that if no other name is put forward, as long as, as long as, uh, Coach Harvey is, um, you know, shall we say, he's completely, completely objective about the whole thing. You don't want to do nothing. They find out, they named the field after him and it turns out there was some scandal that nobody wanted to talk about. Uh, what embarrasses us, then, uh, you know, then why not? That becomes a logical thing. That's what's one approach anyway. I mean, I know that there are people that say, let's not name anything after anybody, but I think that, that's ship to sail. We have Fitch High School. We have a library named after somebody. Uh, to Dr. Mitchell and so on. So it would be the first time that we've named something. I think things, I think facilities, buildings, I think they should be named after people. You should honor people. And if he's the best one to, to, to honor, then, you know, then, then why not? Uh, but we'll certainly take what the gentleman has said here under advisement. Um.
And also, and also I, just so you guys are aware, I, I brought this forward probably in two thousand sixteen as well when we you know, we started talking about, uh, you can see one of the letters there from Coach Joyce that he had written, but you know, just the impact that it had then. So obviously, you know, and then I think two thousand eighteen and now here we are now with the procedures and, you know, how to do it. So this has kind of been something that, you know, I know a lot of alumni had reached out to me about it and, um, but yeah, this, this is really, hasn't just started in two thousand twenty-four. This actually started two thousand sixteen as well. So.
As, as a coach, who's coached thirty-six years, we go to every other school, football, baseball, every field named after somebody. Except for
Right.
The baseball field of Fitch.
But we have nobody to honor.
And if you don't know baseball, no, there is no number two, like Ed is so.
There is, it's not even close.
Just so you know.
A lifetime person in Groton, there's no one even close.
Yeah. Just, I just want you to walk away by that.
Beverly?
No, I was just supposed to check with one person and I, I didn't get a chance to check with this person about Ed Harvey and, um, so I'm gonna hold the law.
And in terms of things that are named at Fitch High School, you have Francis Haggerty Auditorium, Johnny Blom Fieldhouse. The field was named Door Field back in the fifties. The Field House was named, I want to say, early seventies for someone who died in the Vietnam War and the media center.
Right. So the principal's established.
We, we've had other gyms named after Ed Kolnasky. When you, when you talk about legendary coaches, it's going to be Ed Harvey, Ed Kolnasky, they're the, they're the two.
And, um, Richard, um, the track coach.
Well, Rich Costa still coaching. Well, there's Jerry Browning. He was, I would argue they're equal. Yeah. So I would say, we talked about naming the track and I would say Jerry Browning, Rich Costa Track, because they're, they're both out outstanding.
What happened to the twenty sixteen effort? Do you remember?
It kinda
Just this.
Kinda, just kinda didn't really get any traction or move forward, um, you know. I just, I guess I'll leave it at that.
You recall that there was an objection?
No, there was no objection. It just, just it never really got going. Yeah.
And Mark, if I recall, when I got involved, uh, within the last year, uh, there was some question that some board members had about the use of the field by the, the summer college team.
Yep.
What was the and there was some uncertainty about the agreement with, uh, their use of the field because there was some money put in to improve the field.
Right.
And I, I sensed that there was some holdup because of the, the fact that there was some other organization on the outside that contributed money to the field improvements and there's just was some uncertainty about that agreement and how it all played out. So.
Yeah, and a couple of us read through it. There's not one mention of anything like that.
Yep. And, and if I could add, because this is important for one of my teammates and my classmates, um, he's willing to contribute a significant amount of money, uh, to recognize the field naming with a new scoreboard. Um, and it was important for him to, uh, for me to pass that message along. Um, we, we would plan once the board, if the board does adopt the, and, and proceed with the naming of the field, do some kind of fundraising effort, but, uh, my classmate is very willing to front up the money for the cost of the scoreboard with the field name on it, um, so that there's no cost to the town or the board to get that started. And because we want to do that sooner rather than later, that was the really reason that we wanted to push this process, uh, having some history, as Mark said, about, you know, prior, uh, recommendations about the naming of the field for Coach Harvey. Um, you know, none of us are getting any younger and neither is the coach. And we may all, uh, God willing, live many more years, but as I said before, I, I don't like to see a memorialized field. I'd rather see them recognize and be able to appreciate all, all those people that appreciated them. And so, uh, my classmate is, is willing to front up that money to make sure that there's a guarantee for the town at, at no cost. And then we want to buy in some alumni and former players to kind of backload fundraising after the fact, just so that we can get more people involved and interested in supporting it. Um, but again, the donor is, is willing to, to do that. Um, I know it's not related necessarily to the naming process, but it is kind of tied to that, that donation.
It's nice to know.
Are they already calling the field, uh, Ed Harvey Field? I heard that.
Well, people, they've been calling it since when he coached, it was Ed Harvey Field. He's that, kind of that legendary that yeah, people call it Ed Harvey Field because he's, has that, that impact.
Yeah, I think people know, obviously unofficially or officially, it's not named that, but when you ask anybody, you know, I've seen like on social media, different, you know, people, former alumni, oh, the games at Ed Harvey Field, you know, like that's just, like Mike said, that's what they associate that field with him, even though they know it's unofficially named it, you know what I mean? Not officially named that, but I think that, again, that's the impact that, you know, he's had on people. And that the respect that they have for him. So.
That's the reverse of what you see very often, which is officially something's named.
Nobody calls it that.
Right. Good point.
No.
That's easy bridge.
So, so to answer that question, Bev, yes, I went to some baseball games past couple of years and yes, they do announce and call it that. So it's unofficially.
Unofficially named.
Unofficially named that already.
So is our approach going to be something like without objection, we would make the recommendation? Because we're not going to name the field. We would make the recommendation of a lot.
We wouldn't make the recommendation. So like.
Kind of be our approach. So without objection, this is our recommendation.
Yeah, this is our recommendation and moving forward. So before we get to that phase though, I just wanted, um, try to, if we were to move forward, would we name it like Ed Harvey Field or would it just be called Harvey Field? Like, I don't know what the precedence is. So like you had mentioned Door, it seems like it's just the last names continuing. And so.
I think with, with this one, if my, it could be Ed, you know, Edward Harvey Field or Ed, or, you know.
For Ed, okay.
One of the, I would say the full name.
Say the full name. Okay.
Yeah, because then people will know better who the person is, like Door, you're like.
Right.
I don't.
What's the first name for Door?
Well, I don't know.
Opry Fitch.
Yes.
Yeah, like now people just call it Fitch Isley.
Right. Yeah.
So, but the unofficially they call it Fitch, officially it's
Like Captain Canaski, C K.
Yeah, exactly.
But I just want to say, like, if we were going to move forward, like, we need to, like, come up with, like, what's it going to be named, you know, um, you know.
I think we should name it Ed Harvey Field.
Harvey.
That's what they're hoping.
There you go.
And I
Okay, that's what.
We're gonna name him now. We should name it while he's alive. Because we went through that with Captain Canaski. She was alive and people was like, oh, we should name it after somebody that's alive. You know, we should only name things after people that dead and, um, the same thing. Let them smell their flowers now.
Exactly. So like I volunteer for United Way, like Gemma Moran, right? So like she at least got, um, the benefit of the food bank and that. And then when she passed away, you know, now they have like a gala for her. So if we were to move forward with this, right, like, we can recognize the individual, like, while they're still alive and present. And then all of the alumni from Fitch who, you know, were either on the baseball team or the football team, right?
He coached football.
Coached football.
And basketball.
Oh, I didn't realize basketball, but like to, um, to, we can actually have that as an invite, um, and I'm knowing, like, everything I said, like I said before this meeting started. I'm a Fitch alum. I was there during this timeframe. I was there during the championship. I was the manager of the baseball team, full exposure, you know, so, um, I do know how he acts and I know, I do know, um, you know, the type of person he was, right, from my limited timeframe of exposure, not playing baseball or anything. Um, but yeah, um. So.
Well, I never heard any negative things about Ed Harvey.
No.
And, you know, my philosophy is always, nobody's perfect. I mean, you might be little things here and there, but who's perfect but me, you know?
Makes two of us.
The only thing I'm, you know, concerned about, like in the society we live in right, right now is like, um, is there, like what you said, is there something that somebody's going to object about that, um, as we move forward? But, so.
I just know, I was around him for twenty-five years and the answer to that, no. Like shared an office with him for twenty-five years.
That's like the only concern, like naming something after someone because everything is so politicized nowadays that like you can't breathe. So I just want to make sure that like if we make this recommendation, you know, in good faith that, you know.
Well, do you guys think anybody has anything negative to say about him?
Not that I've ever heard.
The teams that he beat, maybe.
Plays for all the plays.
Well, like, yeah, but every coach, you know, you may have some guy that was not, someone who didn't get to play might that.
Some of the two coaches told me that too.
Yeah, like there's always a kid that sat the bench, isn't going to be happy.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, he got cut. He should have kept me.
I did talk to two retired coaches and they had nothing but nice things to say. And they said the same thing. Of, you know, somebody's kid didn't play and some, you know, they might be mad because their kid didn't get to play.
I, I mean, personally, I've never heard one negative.
He was, you know, in the community, when Mr. Harvey said something, it was someone from up above spoke.
It has to be something that was, uh, said injudiciously, uh, something that was, uh, people could say, you know, why are we giving that to a young girl? Ride home every day, kind of, one of these.
Yeah.
Beyond politicization.
And the big one is.
Your actual.
His resume says that he made a significant contribution and there's, I don't think anyone has.
As Mike said earlier, I mean, I, I'm probably the older one in the group here. Uh, because next year will be my forty-fifth reunion. Uh, I still have teammates from my three years of playing that I'll run into every now and then. And we'll talk about Coach Harvey and the positive impact they, that he has. Mike had made some reference to it. Uh, but that's, that's a long lasting, lifelong learning kind of experience that he's had impact on people that really thinks still so positively of, of how he was as a person and, and as a coach. So.
Well, I'm in favor of moving his name forward. I mean, I was on the board from nineteen ninety-three to twenty thirteen and I never heard anything negative about Ed Harvey. So I mean, so nothing ever came to the board level. So I'm in favor of moving his name forward.
A lot of things will come to the board, fortunately. It's my best effort.
Well, I never got, I never got a nasty letter or email from some anonymous person.
Did they have email back then?
Be quiet. Just ignore him.
Dean, I'm not going to put you on the spot right now, but like, um, any.
Oh, maybe, well, I'm inclined to make the recommendation. Maybe not, you know, this evening, this is, you know.
Yeah, because we have a follow-up. We have a follow-up meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could make some.
Can we think about the timing? So let's just say that we were to make a recommendation, make a recommendation to the board, the board acts on it favorably. Um, it would be nice to key our recommendation, assuming we make the recommendation, assuming it's accepted, uh, to key the, um, the proposed naming to an event of some sort. So remind me, when's baseball season? When would be, when would be the best time to do something like this?
But I mean, that's something that we could, you know, again, uh, set up a ceremony in, in sometime in April, probably.
Opening day or something.
And of course, it's nice if you have things in place where there's a sign you can unveil or a plaque stacked.
Oh, yeah, that would be nice. So that would give us plenty of time.
You know, again, to make it as easy as possible for the town and the board event financially is going to upfront the money for the cost of the scoreboard. So, you know, we'd like to tie that ceremony with a scoreboard in place with the name on it.
And unveil.
There is a nice scoreboard up there, I hope you know.
Right, well, we're gonna put a nicer one up.
What do you do with the older one?
Yeah, we did talk about that scoreboard that's currently there. We are repurposing that possibly to the field that, um, Mr. River. Because we do play games there. So that, that way, that field will also have a scoreboard. So we, you know, have that board moved to Mr. River for the JV or freshman games that are being played there.
Good idea.
Yep.
Recycle the use.
Yeah.
Because that's, you know, that's like seven, six or seven years old, that board. So you still got a lot of life in it. And so I think, you know, that would be something that we'd be looking to do.
Yeah.
I would, I would, um, like to double check the agreement, whatever agreement we have with the defense or whatever that organization is, just to make sure. I mean, I like to think it's our field.
Bro, as a taxpayer, I'd seen it, it's Groton's field.
Right.
They had a deal to use it and do some upgrades to use it. It's, and as a coach, it's, it's our field. It's, it's a field.
They don't have any sort of uh weird veto.
No.
I think we fluff that out on Mark.
I've seen the contract. He's got it.
Came on scene and we kinda went through that agreement and I think.
There's things they were supposed to do.
I wanna be able to say that I love it.
They're actually.
Send it to us by email?
Yep, I'll have it, yeah, I can make a copy of it.
There's things they never completed.
Right.
And they're no longer involved to that at this.
Well, they left and came back, but there's some things that they didn't finish. That's a different, that's a different discussion.
I can't imagine.
When you get the contract, send it to all the board members, I think that would be good.
Yep, yeah, I can get that to you. I can't imagine unless somebody really wanna make something like that, that they were in issue, even if they had some sort of veto right over them.
And even in, uh, it's a good point too, uh, e- even talking to them about it, uh, one of the guys who are involved said. Absolutely, that field should be named after Ed Harvey, I didn't even think of that, but yeah.
Well, the the coaches coached against them.
Right. Yep, so, actually both the people involved, yeah, you're right.
Is Schooners still?
Schooners.
Schooners, is it stolen by Tom?
No, he's out, it's a, there's a new owner.
So that's what kinda changed the contract a little bit.
Yeah, there's. Reowners since the original, I believe.
Okay.
Two or three, so, yeah.
So, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I'll get that over to you.
And the agreement was they were gonna use the field and then they're gonna do some upgrades and the town, it's still a towns field, the town maintains it. That was the agreement, basically.
I'm sure you're correct, it's not.
Yep, no problem.
Bounding ice crossing teams, yes, so, like I said, um, I was there during that timeframe. Never had like a bad experience, actually, what you said, um, I witnessed, so I'm also inclined to move forward. Pending, you know, the review, like, um, we have a contact and making sure that there's nothing negative. Associated with the name that would potentially impact the district, but once we look at that. More inclined to move it forward to the board and put it in our agenda. After our meeting, so.
Do we have to have another meeting or can we just look at the contract and say it's a go?
Yeah, basically have, take a phone, have the contingent on.
Yeah. Because like the three of us could take a vote, but they need to be present and we can, you know, share it with them.
So we'll have to have another meeting, is that what you're saying? We can't vote now and say it's contingent on?
And we could vote now. Remember, there are three of us, right?
If you wanna vote now, I just wanted to understand if it was contingent upon you looking and reviewing the materials that Mark's gonna send.
Well, let's put it this way, if if we vote to make the recommendation, and in the meantime, we get a copy of the agreement and it looks like something is in there that's a problem. Hypothetical, of course, that's a problem, uh, then certainly the board could say, well, that's a determining factor and send the next thing. So it's not like we're 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 going out on that much of a limb, so. Is it what what I'm hearing is, I just can't, I'm hearing that there's nothing in there that's been looked at, and I can't imagine why there would be anything. Constant veto or some control over the name of the field, so, um, it's really not intentionally. So I I have no problem taking the vote tonight, it's like I said, if something comes up between now and when the board takes action on this, then. It's our next board meeting, actually board meeting, not a count.
It's like the end of the.
The end is so friendly.
Yeah.
There's nothing to get this out of.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna be limited for these meetings.
Yeah, and we ride in the car.
So the twenty. I believe it's our next meeting, right? We have, we normally have two committee of the whole meetings and then a board meeting, so it's the twenty-third, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that's.
So let's just do that, that sounds capitalier, but let's just do that, we get to go vote now, we recommend. And if uh somebody in the on the board's got a problem with it, the other six have a problem, let us know, we should have it on the agenda for the twenty-third, let Jay know. I'm taking, okay, so.
And Mark's gonna send all the board members.
Good to send you a copy of this.
Yeah, I can definitely put all that together.
Perfect, thank you, so.
I make a motion to um name the baseball field after Ed Harvey. Contingent, no, it's a contingent or an.
No, let's just leave it without a contingency.
Ten, no contingency.
I say.
Okay.
So you'll go down in history.
Alright, thank you.
Vote, all those in favor?
All of us in favor. Perfect.
See, Joe's not here to give us.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm more informal, but I, yeah. Yeah, I'm flying solo to keep us, to to keep me in check, um, so we're moving forward.
I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to present, uh, you know, our our reasoning and appreciate your time for allowing that.
Of course, yeah, no.
Thanks for coming and thanks for all for wanting to buy the scoreboard.
It's not me personally, but I'll support it however I can, but I have the the teammate that is, you know, able to do it, so.
Well, tell him thank you from us.
So.
Need more teammates like that.
So, um, based on the motion and being voted upon informally approved. We are gonna move this forward, we believe the meeting is on September twenty-third, um, Monday at seven o'clock. So that will be moved forward by the ad hoc committee. So.
Six o'clock.
Oh, six, okay, six.
If you guys wanna come and speak up public comments, feel free, we'll speak when we're gonna discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we think somebody on the board who is not familiar with the culture?
Well, Andre being a principal for X amount of years, she should be your coach, right?
Yeah, he was at, when he was coaching, she was at Cutler.
Yeah.
He used to work at Fitch Mill.
Okay.
And he went up to Fitch, so I don't think they. They would know it, she would know him.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised if he were a student.
Nah, I don't.
No, okay.
Don't ask me.
I don't think Ian grew up in that area. Who else? I don't know Mike's background, if he was.
Adrian.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Adrian.
Matt Schumler might come up with some sort of theoretical objection, potential.
Yeah, cuz um, he wasn't, he didn't grow up here.
Yeah. But anyway.
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 Next item.
The next item.
I'm sure these men have something else.
Yes, the next. Okay, the next item is a discussion um regarding the naming of the weight room and I just found out potentially the gym. So Beverly, I know you had mentioned that we can't um talk about the the gym, because.
So we say as naming a portion and then we identify what that portion is later, cuz that's what the. The policy says.
Yeah, we can add it to the agenda.
Uh, it's a special meeting, we'll have a lot added.
Okay.
Okay.
We can't change anything, I didn't realize, cuz somebody said. So I put, I had Joyce put weight room.
Well, no, that's my, that was the initial discussion, but then.
What gym are you talking about?
The large gym.
Oh, the large, the basketball one?
Yep.
See, doesn't even have a name.
Well, and that's a, that's a good story, because in our arbiter sports, that we log in all our games and stuff like that. Every time it comes up, it says big gym, small gym, lean gym, like, there's, it's kinda. But, you know, it it it, but anyway, so, but but so initially, we were discussing the weight mass possibility. And then, you know, Mike and I talked, uh, and basically, we felt that this next person. Uh, was, I wouldn't say deserving of more, cuz I don't know if that's the correct way to say it, but, um. Had such an impact on the athletic department, uh, from the athletic director standpoint, as a uh player, as a student. Um, or student player, a coach, assistant coach, um, you know, educator. Athletic director, yeah, it's just, you know, and really thinking about it, like, the gym really needs a name uh to it. And again, another person who's in the athletic hall of fame and was actually, I believe, one of the original members of the athletic hall of fame. Um, and the impact that he's also had on Groton, grew up in Groton his whole life, um. Caught there, coached there, still is a part of our uh school as a, you know, an assistant coach, he still comes and helps us out. Um, with our football program, I'm actually, I spoke to him, we're reinventing the varsity club, which some of you are probably familiar with. Um, and he's actually gonna come back and help us kinda get that going again, um, so, you know, I think, again, another person who. Had a huge impact, I think, when they're in the building and then now still continues to have an impact. Um, on Fitch High School, Fitch Athletics, our Groton community, um, well beyond his uh. His years of graduation, so, you know, and you can see based on some of the uh accomplishments he had as a student athlete. Uh, coach, I think he retired in two thousand three, I believe it was, um, and. Yeah, probably, yep, and then, you know, still helped out with our, you know, coaching and, um. He's a member of our, like I said, our athletic hall of fame, he's on the committee, he does our, in a athletic hall of fame induction ceremony. And again, the the impact that he's had, when you listen to the hall of fame speeches that these candidates or these recipients. And his name comes up every time as well, and the impact that he's had, the uh, you know. The thankfulness that all these athletes who have come through and every time they see him, give him a hug and, you know, it's always, and you know, in me. As an athletic director, you know, and and coming in and, you know, he he's also reached out and supported me as well, not that that means anything to. To his uh naming of the facility, but just, you know, anything, he'll do anything, I think, to support. Groton Public Schools, Fitch High School, uh, you know, whatever it takes, he's he's still a part of it. I think he's almost eighty years old now and a huge impact.
So I I played for him, I was a captain of the team when I played and, uh, uh, he was a part of all the championships. All four of the Fitch football championships, but when when my kids were going through high school and I was president of Booster Club in Virginia. I I learned from him not to focus on things, you know, like not just the football team, you care about all the sports. And that's what Mike, he cares about all the kids, when when I was going to school, um, it didn't matter what sport you played, he supported it, he he was a. Helped us all and, uh, one thing when talking to him that he's most proud of, aside from sports. But is the leadership programs that he's brought to Fitch, he brought uh leadership training programs to Fitch, um. Varsity guy, I was in the first varsity club that he did, but but there, but after that, he he um, he has military experience. And he brought some of that leadership training that he'd had as an a- as a military man, um, to to the kids, to give them. Get a different perspective from just Groton, to see the world in a bigger way, and so, um, you you won't find somebody that is more. More integral to Fitch sports, I don't think, I mean, we just talked about Ed Harvey, he's amazing, they're both amazing, but, um, but Mike Ellis is. And and his son is the coach now, so of of the football team, so it's a, it's a family thing.
And this is his fourth daughter going through the high school.
Right.
Uh, soon to be a fifth one coming up shortly, you know, so the generations of Ellis's. They actually, even prior to Mike Ellis senior with his family growing up in Groton, and his parents, so. He's been a staple in, I I believe, our community, sure, the Ellis name and for years and years.
And he's been a role model for a lot of people, a lot of people.
For me, uh, someone who played for him and being around, he was my, he was my role model, I followed him, I went to Southern, I did everything he did. And when I was a Southern, as soon as they found out I was in Fitch, and you know, the head of the department, I was in. You know, Mike Ellis, I go, yeah, I played for him, and he goes, alright, come on, so I, like, he had that, even going down to the university, everyone. He was still thought, it was the same way there, like Mike Ellis, greatest player I ever had, greatest person, you know, and that was kind of the. But I followed him, went to Southern for health and phys ed and, and he was the, he was a mentor. That would had a kind, gentle, talk you through it. And his contribution, like I said, is also in the community, he's military, he's involved in uh American Legion, did all the things. That he did and the leadership, like you said.
I might as well chime in since I'm here, he wasn't my coach, but he was my PE teacher, uh, and uh, I can. Everything that Mike said is just, is so true, you know, uh, uh, like Coach Harvey, uh, Coach Ellis, just a man of good character. Uh, that that's a leadership, it did, you know, he always taught leadership skills. And gave you those life skills in the classroom that we still carry with us today. And that's the kind of lasting impact that, you know, people like him and and Coach Harvey have, so. And I just couldn't speak highly highly enough about Coach Ellis.
And and also, I mean, this is even beyond Fitch, but the impact that he's had in the Eastern Connecticut Conference. Um, as a former athletic director, his name constantly comes up when they're talking about rules and regulations and things that he had brought into our conference. Um, when he was the athletic director, it's still going on these days that he was a part of and created, so. You know, again, it's not just Fitch, it's again, our community, Southeastern Connecticut, the whole thing, so his impact is. I would say, yeah, his equal to Ed is, you know.
One anecdote is, uh, for the Thanksgiving Day game, he's the one that came up, we play for a sword, play Legerd for the Colonel Legerd Sword at Thanksgiving Day. Which we won many times since recently, so, but he was the one that came up with the, to go find a sword and and put it on the plaque, and he made that, so. He's, I mean, he's, he cared about the kids, he cared about having something important for them to play for, and it has been, it's proven that.
And he was the AD that shepherded in lacrosse, girls soccer. He coached gymnastics, he shepherded in uh sailing club, and a lot of those things were all his, you know, and he had the challenge of. How to create a new team without taking away from the other teams, now was his challenge, he goes, I don't want to create, and take, we wanna create and make even. And those are, I'm trying to think, what other teams he he was part of, he supported a female wrestler. And we had, she was like the first in the state and he backed her all the way through, so she could wrestle, uh. They had definitely lacrosse teams with him, the girls soccer, all those things he brought in. But, and he was the AD, head of the committee for the building of the gym, of that gym, back in nineteen, back in nineteen eighty.
The big gym?
The big, that was, yeah, that was, he was in charge of that.
He was in charge of that, okay.
With the committee, he was the athletic director.
He he also started that, I believe, that wall of fame too.
He started the wall of fame, yeah.
Where we recognize people within our community who, you know, whether they're a military background, you know, we're major.
Public service.
Public servants, whatever it may be, you know, they started that and then now we've evolved into the Fitch Athletic Hall of Fame, which. You know, it's been going since two thousand fourteen, we average usually about sixteen and he's up there every year. Reading everybody's bio and, I mean, it's, it's a great, uh, great even for sure, but, yeah, his contributions, I think. Like I said, the Fitch High School, the Groton Community, Southeastern Connecticut as well have been outstanding. Well, initially, we, that was one of the initial thoughts, you know, where he coached football and. Uh, you know, was a PE teacher and healthy, so, but then when Mike and I were talking about a little bit further, um. The impact that he had and then, you know, the gym, being a part of making that or creating that gym and. You know, we thought, you know, it, he deserves something bigger, not to knock the weight room, but he, you know, and it doesn't have a name of it. On it, the gym.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we always, and the one thing that we talked about too was, you know, the weight room could be moved and, you know, maybe it doesn't have that. Luster, but the gymnasium, you're always gonna have a gymnasium, so that name, in a sense, I don't see Fitch High School being built anywhere else, but. That gymnasium would be, you never know, but, you know, but that gymnasium is always gonna be there. And, you know, who else, whose name else would you rather have on it than Mike Ellis?
He deserved to be at the top.
Yeah.
Well, I might be in favor of the gym, but I'm not in favor of naming two.
It wouldn't be two.
Places.
No, no, it'd be one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
So the weight room would be a dead issue.
It would be.
For Mike Ellis, yeah.
Correct. So my question is. Um, why? The basketball, since he was technically head of football, should we?
No, he was, he was, he was physical education, athletic director.
Okay.
He was athletic director along, and he was a football coach.
And the football field already has a name, the door field.
Oh, I thought that was just the building.
No, that's Johnny Blount Fieldhouse.
Oh, okay.
Does anybody refer to any of the facilities as the Ellis whatever, of the way they do Harvey Field? Okay, that has a problem.
No.
Well, uh, as someone who announces, welcome to the big gym for today's basketball game, that doesn't. Every other school you go to, welcome to the X, welcome to Conway Gym, welcome to Palmer Gym, I can tell you.
Oh, yeah, New London is.
Yeah, they all, yeah, and they all have names and then it's welcome to the.
The new gym.
The big gym.
Nineteen eighty-three gymnasium.
Oh, yeah, oh, you just said, you don't say that, do you actually? That, just welcome to Fitch High School?
What, usually say the gym, like you go to every sport.
We don't have to because our gym doesn't have a name, so you just say, welcome to Fitch High School.
They would say Jim Ho.
Yeah, big gym. He's in the closet.
That's where, that's where you'll say, the Fitch High School gym.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These, I mean, when, um, you start off the basketball game?
Yeah, a lot of times, welcome. That's how.
Yeah, well, that sounds better than welcome to the big gym.
You say, welcome to Fenway Park, you don't say, welcome to the field.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, welcome to the gym at Fitch High School or something, you know.
There have been times when they actually. Not, not me, previous announcers would name it after somebody, you know, welcome to Beverly Washington Gym. Because, because everyone says, done, what's the name of, people walk in, what's, we have writers, they walk in, what's the name of the gym? We say the big gym, because they like to put in.
Yeah.
Say, big gym. J I M.
That's, that's really what it is. Yeah, it's like when you look at all the, uh, like our weekend schedules and something that just says, big gym. You know, small gym, big gym.
I think even as a student, it was big gym, small gym.
Now, would anybody, I, would anybody, um, say anything or apologize? Um, negative about Mike Ellis? I might have the. Kind of.
Uh, I mean, I've known Mike Ellis probably longer than I've known Harvey and I don't. I would say absolutely not either, neither, I think, like I said, both these candidates, uh, you couldn't ask for, I think, two better candidates or. Recipients of these, uh, the honor.
Again, he was athletic director, so there's probably some difficult.
Yeah.
Conversations.
Right.
But, yeah, nothing, I'm not there for anything.
Yeah, those are.
Well, they're just skeletons.
No.
Totally skeleton, like.
Season.
Character like.
Yeah, character defects.
Definitely not Mike. I guess the squeaky clean of the.
I remember Gigi though. Which, Gigi worked.
Yeah.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah. I remember Mike also.
Yeah. Well. Beverly Dean, are you? Set with questions for the?
Again, sort of same thing, is, is there any potential competition for this? I mean, I, I can imagine that it, it maybe even with the, uh, with the Ellis naming, I mean, with the Harvey naming. Uh, people saying, whoa, it's that easy, my God, I could have put, uh, you know, my, my best, uh, idea for a code in it.
But there's.
If only I had known, you guys.
Someone who's been in your whole life, sixteen years, there's no one.
No.
Close.
Yeah.
No basketball coach?
No.
That's definitely, we really haven't had.
Nope.
Nope.
There could be other football coaches that you might name, and there's track coaches.
Nice.
But.
No basketball, uh, no. And, and I would say, you know, he was definitely the AD when my senior year, nineteen eighty, we didn't have that gym. It was the, the small gym that you referred to.
Yeah.
It's all we had. So if Coach Ellis was the AD and very involved in getting that gym to be built as part of the process, I'm sure there was a lot of board event meetings and. Budget meetings and all that stuff as the AD, I'm sure he was there, involved in that process, so. To talk about, is there anybody else, he would be the one, only one really that, that can be attached to that.
And, and, you know, I know that there's other high schools in the state that they name. You know, I can think of one off the top of my head, you know, an AD just retired and they named the, the gymnasium after him because it, that, at that time. I think it was, uh, Amity did not have a gym, you know, it's kind of, I don't know whatever they called it, but the AD had retired probably like a year or two later. Uh, they named it after a, a guy who, you know, was a long time AD as well, just like Mike. Um, but, you know, I'd be, I don't, I mean, big, some of the years that he had as the AD are like. You know, even looking back on it as an AD and looking at, and I'm like, man, you know, the nineties at, at Fitch High School specifically, when you look at all the banners and. Championships and he was a part of all that stuff. He hired predominantly, probably all those coaches, I would say, for the most part. And, you know, saw them through success and, so, I mean, then. That was, you know, and then he retired in the early two thousand, so he, that was. As an AD, like that was his time, which I had that.
That's still the gold standard in the Fitch Athletics, that stretch.
The, the nineties were, you walk in the weight room and it's all, you know, me and the sport, there's a banner for it pretty much, so.
I just remember back then, they used to call that group of guys, the good old boys club. And that's like nags at me a little bit, that they were all the good old boys.
I.
Who called them that though?
See, I. I. I wouldn't have put, if it's administrators, I wouldn't put Mike in there because he was never in that, he did things because he was administrator. But as a teacher who was there, Mike was never. There's other people that might have said that, but, uh, well, it wasn't Mike, because Mike was always kind of pushed out by the good old boys club.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of naming the, the big gym after Mike Ellis.
Is that with the J I M or D Y?
Mike, the big gym, Ellis.
Put his name on either side of that gym. Yeah. And the Alex.
Mike Ellis.
That's his new nickname. Big Jim, get over here.
Went to school here, Jim.
But not the weight room, only the gym.
The gym. So, how, um, yes, how are we going to handle this? So, because the topic is naming of the weight room, so we're going to push that as. We are gonna. Mix that, right? How are we going to move forward with other? Other option, because it's a special meeting and we can't change.
Yeah, you know, after further discussion, I don't, you know, you know, are you guys? Uh, it's Roberts rules thing.
Yeah.
Or you'd have to make, you'd have to make an, you'd have to vote to make an amendment to the.
Yeah, but can't do them, especially me.
Not today, but you could do it on the twenty-third or whatever, your next meeting.
That's true.
Full meeting. Just bring it up again.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hold music, uh, for. I don't know, what's something up?
Yeah, no, we just wanted to show, is this like.
Hold with the church on hold?
Oh.
Yeah. Something bossing over me and. Girlfriend didn't even, um, elevator.
How would you guys feel if we didn't name the gym after Mike Ellis?
I'd be, me someone, I, I'd be. I'd be ticked off a little bit because I, I, because that's how much I think it should be named after him.
It's overdue.
Just like. I would have been ticked off, they didn't name the, named me, sent after Jim Mitchell, like it was that. You know, the, and the importance of Johnny Blount being named after him, those are all. Valid people that should have had named after him, you know, and someone who's, I, like I said, I went through, I've been in my whole life and.
Historical figures and.
Yeah.
Fitch High School.
Yes.
Exactly, I don't know how to say it, but.
There are people that are. There's deserving and there's extra deserving and these two people are beyond extra deserving.
I, I think it provides life to a district, it is, it's about teaching and this sort of stuff. But, uh, you know, naming facilities, especially people who have been involved, sometimes they're named after, you know, former school superintendent or something like that, but. You know, uh, but I mean, for example, Cutler was named after Carl Cutler, Cutler was involved in education, I want, I'm sorry that the building that, that's, that's there now. Wasn't named again after Carl Cutler and, uh.
They make a suggestion, they could name a. A hallway after him in the school, could be the Carl Cutler hallway, there's still ways to name a portion and still do that.
You know, so somebody, someone was involved, somebody should, somebody should be honored for their alive to see it or not. Uh, I like that idea because it, it, as I said, it provides life to the, to the institution. Uh, I like to think that once in a while, somebody might say, hmm, who was this person? Who was Carl Cutler who was, uh, who was big Jim?
And I can say, S B, S B Butler, I, I taught there for seven years. And his grandson, her son came in and went to talk to the kids about who, he was the superintendent of the schools, who was Samuel Butler, and they came in and shared that.
Yeah.
He would come every year.
They teach the kids the history behind the name.
It's alive, it's alive. As a coach for football, we, we have them, if you haven't been upstairs in the field house, it's a history, it's a museum. Really, and, uh, go up there and we have them, we quiz the kids and it's, it's, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing. And the, and the, the trophy hallway near the basketball, uh, for wrestling, have them go out there and, you know, find names, so.
Um, but I wonder if they do it for the schools, like, you know, Charles Bonham, do they talk to the kids, you know, this is the Charles Bonham with so and so and so and so.
I went to Charles Bonham.
Who was Charles Bonham?
I don't know. He was Barnum and Bailey's friend.
Oh, my God.
You know, like William Sealy, I know William Sealy, he's first, first. First, uh, person to die in World War Two. You know, and there's a name that should have been.
Yeah.